Meeting day recorded, going to have a public hearing. Let's talk about CARES Act real quick. So so far, we've allocated up to 200,000 for this evening. Two million for the small business grant program. I spoke with Jim Decker on Friday about other things, and he noted that so far they've had 700 some thousand, no, 900,000 requests for this third round. Looking at the numbers, we really have some more CARES Act money that we could allocate.
Okay. That's one of the reasons I was asking. And then, of course, you know all these requests, so.
Well, these requests were all budgeted already. I mean, they were already in their last spreadsheet that you looked over. The fact that we aren't able to do much of the broadband, basically, I think we should just take all the remaining broadband money and throw it in the SBG right now. So we have requests for broadband within the amount of Now, that includes both the Grand Valley opportunity and the Youngsville Mebron opportunity. So I would say we allocated 500,000 to that. Take 500,000, subtract that number, and just allocate it over. Does that sound reasonable?
It does. The only thing I was thinking is, we didn't have a call on Friday with Eric from MobileCom. I mean, I'm assuming that there's nothing else that can be done as it relates to broadband before the end of the year. But he, we did introduce him to Chris Perlitz. And so they were gonna just kind of brainstorm. So if we get any response from them back, that would be fine. But I, other than that, that would be the only other thing that I could think that might generate. Yeah, I don't know.
Did they do anything by the end of the year?
That's what I asked them. Now, they seem to have interacted very well together. I mean, they both spoke the same language. I did not. But.
You didn't have Vulcan?
I did not have Vulcan. I did not, no. I did not speak broadbandese. So, yeah, so I think that that would be the only thing if they come up with an idea for a project, so. I'm certainly very supportive of moving more dollars towards the small business grants as we continue on with COVID and where we stand in the community.
I don't have a problem with it either, but I really think that we're kind of at the point where we should have a chart, like liquid wave, to review. Because, I mean, my thing with moving money over is is they're reviewing the applications. Or their, the applications are still coming in for the rest of the week, like. So I think technically, if we could put something together that's like with what we have already, and then.
Well, we're just discussing today. I was, I was committed to getting this spreadsheet with everything. What was broken out by allocation to small business grant program. The fire EMS stuff, which we have not actually got that many applications. I think not even half of the, not even half of the departments have applied at this point. Municipal reimbursements, county projects, and we're not doing the Department of Health or the EMS stuff, so that's.
Should we work with Pam to, or somebody, Pam to reach out to them and kind of follow up with them about the opportunity, like the fire departments, you know?
Who would be out there this week?
Yeah, I'll pass that thought, but let's say.
Well, well, somebody, like, I was just saying.
These are letters, but I think that they could call.
Yeah, I think, I think that a lot of folks, like, and I think that's why, like, the small business grant program is so huge in the third round, because now they've seen two lists where people have got money, and they, now they wanna, they're like, oh, wait, you know, I need to, you know. So I think.
Well, if you could send that updated, the allocation, and then I'm also interested in how much we spent cumulative thus far, which would be right on there as well.
It is on there.
Yeah, so that would be good. That way, we can all take a look at it and then kind of think through what our strategy would be if we need to reallocate those dollars. And get a plan for that commission.
And there's a couple of things that I've gotta get you to for things that I want to pitch. And I, and I've been so focused on this other stuff that, you know, I kind of want to get that, and then either do it or not do it, you know, too. So having an idea of how that fits into the rest of it, I think, is important.
I agree.
The other thing to consider is that the city of Warren and Youngsville Borough at minimum expressed interest in having reimbursements for their essentially law enforcement time, which we know is eligible. And while we're helping the businesses directly, and there are so many other programs that are helping them, PPP and whatever, there is nothing to help municipalities except for this money. I'm not saying that we can make them whole, but it is a huge hit in terms of the IT and LST. So if we could do something to reimburse their law enforcement costs, I would be supportive of that. But up till now, I've been saying that would be, I've told them that it would be if we get a windfall of the remaining billion that the state is sitting on. Because that would be the easiest thing to do is just, I mean, show us your payroll, Dan, here's the money. So they could send, like, the state could send us that money on December 1st, and we would be fine. Whereas you can't spin up another round of the business, small business program with that little amount of time, which is essentially why I'm saying.
Do we have any, is there any wind of what they're attempting to do with the Commonwealth Fund?
I mean, no, nothing.
Yeah, you just like.
I think that the, for some, to some degree, they were waiting on what was happening in Congress, too. And now with the idea that everything's kind of dead after the election, I mean, my assumption is is that the rest of November is gonna be a complete, what's the term on that? It's not offensive. It's gonna be interesting. Because I think there'd be just a ton of activity after that as they're scrambling to try to figure out what to do with that money.
Okay, so I will send you either today or by, let's say, one o'clock tomorrow, this spreadsheet for yours to have a good day to review it. But it's the two things competing in my mind right now. I, everything's on each other for this week. I think we just go ahead and prove, like, we've been planning all of these things. Got plenty of the money set aside for those items, so I'm not concerned about that. But the big point of discussion will be, what do we do about municipalities that have law enforcement? And what do we do with the remaining cash? Do we put it in SBG? Do we do some sort of split? So that'll be the big question and discussion.
Well, and I would just say that I do support helping the municipal police departments in Youngsville, Warren, and Congress, although.
Oh, sorry.
Just because, you know, they've played such a huge part in addressing so much stuff over the past six months. So, you know, whatever that is, you know, if we can figure out that, that would be great.
Any questions about the CARES Act requests that are in the packet for Wednesday?
I haven't reviewed them in detail, so I guess I'll need to do that again. I really wanted to see the comprehensive list that we had.
Sure.
Yep.
The only thing that I wanted to add is that I'm gonna be, my intention is to spend at least $1,000, if not 1,500, on election stuff, north, south, and west polling precincts. So I just wanted to throw that out there so that you guys were aware of that, you know, as far as posters, stuff to help maintain social distance, you know. I figured, when I first started out, I was trying to figure out, okay, how do I get this down, 500 or 600? And I'm sitting here going, you know.
Got my goodness.
I'm so good at it.
Yeah, what a goodness.
Let's just make sure that the place is locked down as best we can.
Sounds good. Is, who's working on the partitions and dividers?
Basically, we're gonna take stuff from the warehouse and then utilize that and just split it right down the middle. So there's still a chance that it'll end up moving into the hallway. As we said before, the big challenge is, is that within the past few days, we have found the capacity of that room according to whatever the change regulations are, whatever is not actually 25, but it's 15. So that creates like a logistical challenge, depending upon how many poll watchers we have or don't have. So that's something to discuss. If we feel like we're literally cannot have one more person in that room without like kind of having an issue with that, then we may end up moving those folks out of the hallway. Yeah. It all depends. Like, we, there's still a lot to turn out there to some degree.
And then, Pam, did you put the meeting schedule in our pockets for 2021, or did we just discuss it? We're just discussing it, because I haven't put it together yet. Okay.
So, very, very attention back to CARES Act funding real quick. City of Warren requested 5K, but they've also requested about 100K, so. That's, that's the city thing. We, I may not recommend that we put that on the agenda for Wednesday just because we assume that we'll be giving them a higher allocation in five dozen hours. Youngsville DFT is what it is. Youngsville Borough looks simple. Russell DFT is simple. Clarenham Borough is simple. Women's Care Center, that's actually, there's nothing there right now. They asked me if we could buy them some smart boards and that sort of technology, but I don't have any quotes or anything on that, so. Nor do I necessarily know if it would be eligible. So if not, we won't be that much of a concern for Wednesday. Sheriff's Department and Oklahoma Safety is what it is. And then you want the COOP plan, which I, it's actually in there, right?
Yes. It is, but it's not been approved yet, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that is some, so that's one of the. Have any, have all of these been approved? Is that what you're saying, or no?
No, these are all being brought to be approved on Wednesday.
Okay.
Although I'm saying I will not be bringing the Women's Care Center because I don't have the information. And the city of Warren, there's more discussion. Yeah, there's more discussion. Yeah, I just tried to look through those. But the EMCM consulting thing, that's not a small, all these other things are small, and it's been any issues. We may actually want to discuss EMCM consulting, so I'm bringing it to your attention. So if you have any questions, you can either ask me, or Ken Horson, or even contact EMCM directly, because it's a bigger area of discussion.
That's true.
Okay, any other concerns? Moving on to the 2021 meeting schedule. All right, so work sessions, I'm liking the way that it is right now, where we do one in advance of every other, I mean, of all of the voting meetings. We can set the agenda and that sort of thing. I think that's working pretty well. So I would say keep that the same next year. Any objections? Okay, commissioners' meetings, keep looking at it. It's the second and fourth Wednesdays, but we want to continue to do the 5:30 meeting, or maybe move it up to 4:30, go back to noon.
I'd propose noon, I.
I mean, I would believe.
It's just consistency for both the public.
I, for our staff, it's been kind of confusing. I've done a couple that have come at noon on the fourth Wednesday and confused me. And, I mean, I'd be more than happy to have commissioners' meetings if the public was coming.
Yeah.
I'd move them all to 5:30, but I don't think we've seen anyone from the public come this year, right?
Well, other than when we were doing allocations for the.
Right, that was.
And Jane.
Those were all. Yeah, but you're gonna get that either way.
Jane's gonna come either way, she does come either way.
Yeah, she does.
And those were specific things that we were voting on in the SBG. So that's.
And then if, you know, if there's a situation where, you know, we get more public input, more public coming, we can always make a change. I know it's not recommended because we have to advertise it or something very unique and, you know.
Yeah, but that other evening meeting was a special meeting.
Right.
The SBG meeting was, yeah, a special scheduled meeting. So I'm not really seeing a compelling reason, but I'm disappointed because I do want to have more public input, and I was hopeful that it would be more.
I think, I think, I think we just do it on an as needed basis. I mean, we have, we've had public hearings, meetings in the evening to get more information. Like, it's not like there's been, you know, and then prior to COVID, we're doing town calls. I mean.
Right.
We've, we've done a lot to try to do those engagement pieces, so I don't think that anybody, I think we've tested it for a year, and then, you know, whatever.
Plus, it gets published on YouTube.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you've got that if anybody has to watch at any point in time afterwards, or has questions again.
I think just taking the new meetings is a good thing.
So both at noon? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, I do have one, one question, and one through the dates. If there is a CCAP, it will be, the fall will be November 22nd through the 24th. The 24th is a commissioner meeting.
It's the day before Thanksgiving, right?
Yes. There is also one December 8th. So do you want to do December 1st or cancel that one November meeting?
I think we have to do two.
Right, we'll still want to have, well, we don't have to, but we'll probably want to because we'll be in the same situation where the budget, we'll hopefully be releasing the budget at that point. So I'd say we probably want to still have one. Now, the CCAP Fall Conference, it doesn't end Thursday evening, so we just have to drop right back, I think would be the point. I'm sorry.
It's not in.
Tuesday.
Or you're saying 2021, yes, 2021, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 24th is the last day.
Absolutely, you have a morning.
And then you have Thursday, Friday is your Thanksgiving holiday. So you could go with December 1st, knowing that you're gonna have November 8th.
Are we going to do December 1st and cancel the 8th?
Yeah, why don't we do that? That sounds good.
That sounds good, yeah.
There you go.
Good job. There you go.
Split the difference. Okay. Town halls, we continue on the same logic as previously, right? So we don't schedule one any, we didn't do any of them this year, so.
I did, yeah, I just did the same schedule. And then, you know.
Leave that to your discretion. Prison Board meetings, same thing, right? Just kind of, kind of looked at this year, right?
It was every other month.
Yeah, every other month, and then we, yeah.
Now, do some counties put all those meetings together? Like Prison Board and.
Not Prison Board.
No, Prison Boards, but they do, like we do with the Election Board meeting, they have that before and go into it.
Right.
One county will start their public meeting, recess, go into Salary Board, adjourn that one, and go back to public.
I am interested in consolidating those a little bit more.
Me too.
We moved in that direction. Previously, we were, there were two, there were three scheduled meetings. And then we kind of declined elections, and I think that worked. I think it'll especially work next year because they'll be simpler. I mean, this year, we had updates every time.
I think that will work, Salary Board, I'm not so sure, because sometimes that is an hour-long meeting.
Sometimes. I'm actually inclined to advertise it at the same time and retire from the commissioners' meeting into Salary Board.
Yeah, that's, makes sense.
The only thing, the only, the reason Salary Boards are tough, though, is because you have the treasurer involved, you know, as another member, and then whatever elected official, so, like, you can, you can start the commissioners' meeting, kind of run long, they're, they're sitting there, and then they don't, you know, they leave, or they, you know, they don't hammer on wave, or, you know, that kind of stuff.
Well, currently, we have the Board at 11:00. How about we move it to 1:00?
Well, initially, I was thinking, oh, that's, that sounds much better. We should have the commissioners' meeting and then go to the Salary Board. But then I'm like, oh, that's right, we've got two other people, one or two other people who would.
Yeah, but I'm saying that our commissioners' meetings are not an hour-long.
Well, but on the flip side of it, like what Pam's saying is that sometimes that Salary Board meeting goes on forever, and the delay is the commissioners' meeting.
Why I'm saying move it to the aft, after the commissioners' meeting, right? It's currently 11:00, move it to 1:00.
Okay, and I'm, and again, I'm just saying that, like, the reason, which is, I don't, I, it's six dozen, whatever, half the other word, whatever the term is.
Six eggs, something, no, it doesn't.
Doesn't work. My thing is, again, is if the commissioners' meeting runs long, all of those people are waiting for the meeting.
I think that's all right, though. I think we'll try to just.
I don't think we've had a commissioners' meeting that's been an hour-long.
Well, I mean, I mean, we've, we've gotten lucky on a couple where we got out quicker than we thought we would, like, but I'm just saying.
Well, with having it at noon, you kind of have to try to keep it an hour because then the courts need to get back in there.
Well, that's my other, that's another issue. Consider, okay, if we have it in the Jackson courtroom, and they need to get in there, I mean, are we even gonna be able to schedule it for 1:00?
The Salary Board can still be down here.
Okay.
For that matter, if you truly have a commissioners' meeting that's running longer, we can recess, have a Salary Board meeting, and then resume the commissioners' meeting.
Okay, that's.
And that way, our schedules are not conflicting with others. I mean, then you're just trying to get Pam and three commissioners.
I'm just thinking back to the times where we've had people angry about Salary Board and either not being, you know, notified or us having it and them not showing up because, you know, something. That's all. That all sounds good.
Second question, though, so it makes sense to move to 1:00, but this time, this year, we only were doing the first. Do you want to advertise them for every, after every commissioners' meeting? Or just continue with the once a month?
I just keep with the once a month.
I think once a month.
We don't have a ton of stuff on the agenda, that's.
No, we don't.
If we did, then I would suggest.
It used to be really important, but the thing is, once we figure it out that we're not actually voting to hire people in that meeting, the agendas basically are heavy towards the end of the year. It should be in advance of the new budget.
Right.
Otherwise, not a big deal.
Yeah, one of the, the previous boards seemed to use it as a way to bob the knife. You know what I mean? I think that they espouse more authority and control.
Oh.
You know what I mean?
I do.
And so people will come to the Salary Board order to kind of petition to rehire people and stuff like that.
I see.
So then Retirement Board quarterly would be after the Salary Board meeting, right? And the quarterly schedule's working, I think that works.
Yeah, I think it does.
Yeah, so it's good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, budget hearings, it'll just work, you'll figure that out with their. Town halls, we talked about, so that's everything. All right, any other questions about the 2021 meeting schedule? Okay. Then you will draft that up and bring it to the later, right? Or you just do it?
No, I just do it.
We're gonna continue the Election Board meeting, so maybe we've been dealing with it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. And if you just draft that and circulate, I just like to kind of just do it quick.
Oh, yeah. And that would be prior to the commissioners' meeting, the first commissioners' meeting. What's that?
As needed, yeah.
It doesn't hurt to advertise it as both, right?
No.
And then we just, if we don't need it, we don't have it.
Yep.
Okay.
And then if somebody has an election issue, they can bring it.
Yeah.
You know, it's on, and then it's advertised, I think.
Okay. All right, back to the work session agenda and policy procedures. We'll probably work on a couple things before Wednesday.
Well, after, maybe later today, after we get done with some of the stuff that we're doing, can, can we just sit down and go over what we have so that we can talk about some of the stuff that you were.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Or tomorrow, whenever, because I, I think that we can throw together what you're looking for.
Oh, I know, I know what you're doing.
The Election Board meeting, I just.
It won't take long.
Yeah, because, because I, I've been trying to go through and think about what you're talking about, and I, I think I have a better sense, but I just want to make sure that we're doing everything.
Yeah, it won't take long. Projects and project updates.
Yeah, so broadening discussions are continuing.
Most, you know, all, all nice stuff to some degree is on the whole, just focusing on the election and the budget, basically. Just want to make sure both of those get carried off as effortlessly.
Effortlessly.
And peacefully as possible.
Yes.
Which, which it's, it's been that way for the most part. So I feel pretty good about that.
Apartment committee updates, I'm sorry, meeting agenda for Wednesday. We already talked about CARES stuff. One of all was also a request. We had put in the budget last year, $10,000 line item essentially for that project, which hadn't been requested up until now. That is for the physical co-working space renovations, which is like the flooring and furniture and that sort of stuff. And so any questions related to that? We should talk to Phil, Phil Verkle and myself for them. But again, it is budgeted, it was intended. And then, oh, the maximum, I assume it's maximum, not maximum.
Okay.
So that's the cost allocation plan, which we do annually. All right, any else on these long agenda? Okay.
Yes.
Commissioners' schedule, I'm gonna bug out of here as soon as I can today because I have evening meetings several days this week. Other than that, if I may ask, that you chair the Salary Board Wednesday.
Okay.
Reason being, maybe you can meet in Erie before that, and I'll think I can make it back before. But I can call them, so I'll be.
That's fine.
Able to communicate thoughts, but not necessarily see the room and show the meeting. I think that's it calendar-wise. Anything else? Okay, no mineral discussion, updates.
One more.
Let's see if this will go in today.
Drafted on, I guess it would be a news release of like a, some put out at the very least on social media just about where we're at with the Elections Office. The one thing that I wanted to ask Lisa was just the tally on mail-in absentee ballots that we processed, because I think you had said, or I think I had heard that it was 6,500 at this point, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be exact, but I, like, around that number, but the.
Can't be the exact numbers of what we've put out so far, or what's united.
Yeah, the, the Elections Office is running, you know, at peak capacity, that they're putting out ballots as quickly as they're being requested, that we feel caught up and in good shape going into next week, as far as that goes. And, and then, and then we wanted to include some links, like in case, like if someone has questions about whether their ballot's been received and that kind of stuff, giving them the contact information for the Elections Office. And, or, well, actually, the contact information for the Department of State's website so that they can go and check it there. And then if they have questions about, like, if they haven't received their ballot yet and they have concerns that it's been lost in the mail or something, they can give them that information. But just trying to kind of convey that everything's going as well as it could be at this point.
And then we've expanded the workforce to make sure it meets up with the demand of the additional mail-in ballots.
We've got, you know, several oxygen tanks that we've ordered for Lisa. She's a patient of oxygen.
A little bit of heat. That's good.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Well, if there's nothing else, we will be retiring to the second session to seek legal counsel regarding an agreement with Youngsville in advance of Wednesday meeting and what election issue? Of the South.
Yeah, update on litigation and so.
I do have two questions. One, there's a 12:30 meeting downstairs. Do we know what that's about? No? Okay, 12:30 now, okay. The other is, I've heard that someone's going door-to-door and that the county is saying, don't give your mail-in ballots to anyone. What's going on? What have we heard? What should we do?
Say that would be a Nathaniel question. If we can, I mean, I've heard of. Say that would be a methanol question, if we can find, I, I've heard.
I think there were, well, we, we made a public announcement, right? So, I mean, there, there was a report that, uh, the Board of Elections received that a mail in Columbus Township was going door to door, offering to collect ballots of relatives for delivery. That report was delivered to the, to Lisa at the Elections Office. She contacted the Board of Elections, myself and the District Attorney's Office and, um, the Sheriff's Office, it was under investigation, had it Friday, and, uh, we're waiting for a report, and then we made a, uh, a public service announcement about it, warning parties, warning citizens not to, uh, honor any requests of that nature, so.
And just encourage them to bring their ballots to the courthouse if they don't mail them, they should be given to an Elections worker in the Elections Office, not to anybody outside of the Elections Office.
So, okay, I guess it is fine, we're adjourned, so what, what's the meeting?
I don't know. I, as I was walking in here, I was like, I wonder if I should run out of here to get to the twelve-thirty meeting downstairs.
Does the wonderful has to do with city safety, security for the election? What, was it, did they create a task force for that?
I assume if Lisa's here, then, no, that's not it.
I mean, there's, there.
Isn't that a Rob Green thing?
Well, there's a, there's a secret meeting, but I don't think it's now, it's like, I think it's tonight or something.
Okay.
It's not very secret, it's on the board if you come in, if it's this one.
Is there any?
No, it's a, it's a courtroom meeting, meeting twelve-thirty.
I noted that.
I know that's where you have.